That research calls for and that we think will yield the best results and produce students that hopefully would be eligible for AP Spanish as they enter ninth grade, based on research and what other districts have done. So we've really done a lot of type review of this percentages. We had, so Saguas makes some shift very early in the year, their upper grades. They've been getting great results, but they went back and realized that continuing the Spanish instruction was not going to diminish their English results, and quite the contrary, it would continue to strengthen it. So that is a research-based model we have in practice here in the district. We felt it was important to have the conversations that we had so that the programs would stay aligned and wouldn't venture off into other directions and not yield the results that we hope to have, and we could only blame on ourselves for not implementing the program gradually. So this plan gives also teachers a reference to which language subjects and which area. Again, that was something that kind of evolved individually through school site. So through looking through research and looking at what other districts are doing and trying to yield the results we want, and also looking at the resources we have here, the district has always adopted and provided material in both languages for all content areas when it's been available. There have been some times when they had to make decisions and publishers were forthcoming after the fact with the Spanish material, but it was always has adopted material that has been available in both languages. And one thing that came out of that meeting, and it comes up here, is the need to, ultimately we want the classes to be linguistically balanced, because again, that's a key element of research. We want the students to be, not all students who are learning English as a second language, we want students to be native English speakers and English learners. We are getting more and more to that balance in some of our school sites, but we want more. So one topic that is under, this whole document, this living document that will keep being changed, was way at looking at enrollment and to maybe at some point propose centralized enrollment for that program, so that we can ensure all those parents and families that want the program have access, which we are doing now, but that we can also optimize the linguistic balance of the classrooms across the four campuses. Because it will be most effective when we have the teacher with the appropriate bridge on everything in place, and we have the appropriate linguistic balance of students. So that is something that is a bit of a work in progress and a proposal that would come forward, but nothing that, there's nothing now that we're changing any district policy or board regulations in terms of how students are entered. And we would also like to then have the schools come together to do their informational meetings so that it's the same presentation across the district, of course, with each school highlighting what makes their school unique. Because all of our schools have unique elements, they can all run a great program, but as a school and as a community, they all have unique personalities and to be able to sell those unique personalities to the families, so families can decide which school they'd like to attend. So it's a very dense document with some changes still being made, only because I think Rosa really wanted us to be a K eight district, but we're not. So she, I have to keep going back anyway, K six, and like a million times changing it, and then we have to send somebody to make little edits. So every time I look at it, I'm like, K six, K six, not K eight. So there is, we are working with the high school district and making a recommendation of what that pathway could look like, but we can't presume that we are not making a K eight district right now from this document. So those, you see that anywhere in the document, those need to revise, and we'll get that back to you.
Anything to the public?
Yes.
I think one of the...
Can you get close to my phone?
Or I can just use my teacher voice. I think one of the issues is that she mentions having a linguistic or and cultural balance in our student population, but I'm not sure that our program is getting that in the teaching population. And so I think we should be looking at our teachers in the dual immersion program also being linguistically and culturally balanced. And I think that that's not occurring yet. I'm not sure how to solve that in a 910 situation, but at least in the 60, 40 and upper grades, it seems like we could make sure that the program is having teachers collaborate so that the students get taught from a different...
So, okay.
And I was gonna say, right now, we're staffing as we're required to all of the classrooms with B-CLAD teachers.
B-CLAD?
B-CLAD. We have, all of the moves that are designated as dual immersion need to have a B-CLAD teacher so that we don't have any misassignments.
Okay. Thank you very much, presentation. And any questions from the board later on? Please don't hesitate. Talk to us directly. Okay? Okay, we have an action item here coming up, well, let me go through the information one. Curriculum, there's none. Personnel, none. Business, none. And now we're with administration, action item. And this is the approval of new superintendent contract. Okay. Ms. Martinez, Martha Martinez.
She's here in the back.
She's in the back. Please come here, and we want to introduce you to the public.
First of all, we'd like to read a little introduction before we speak, if that's okay. Martha Martinez is, is, was Assistant Superintendent, Curriculum and Instruction for North Monterey County Unified School District with eighteen years in K-12 administration. She started her educational career in Gilroy Unified School District as a parent professional and proceeded to serve as state preschool teacher, elementary teacher, and elementary principal. Her district and county level work included state and federal programs administrator, categorical director, senior level director of district and school leadership services. And in addition, Martha was the DAIT lead for SCCOE and the regional director, Regional Five, Santa Clara, San Bernardino, Monterey, and Santa Cruz for the regional system of district and school support. Martha received a master's degree in organizational leadership from the University of San Francisco and a bachelor's degree in child development from San Jose State University. She is the recipient of several awards. AXA 2015 Region 10 Curriculum and Instruction Award, 2014 Armanis Leading Network Award, 2012 AXA Region and Central Office Administrator, CALSA 2012 Honoring Our Own, and she received a 2012 Certificate of Recognition from Tom Torkelson, Torkelson, State Superintendent of Public Instruction for her work as a distinguished school regional lead. Currently, Martha serves on the following groups: Educational Leaders of Monterey County, New Teachers Project Steering Committee, Monterey County Reads, District Task Force, and North Monterey County Community Alliance. She is a CALSA Region One representative, mentor for cohort seven and nine, and was recently elected as CALSA Vice President. She has served on AXA Region Executive Board, CSCOE Administrator Association, Charter President, founding member of the Latino Family Fund, and the San Jose State University Educational Board. She's a passionate educator who exhibits a relentless drive for public education. Her wish as superintendent of Salinas City School District is to combine her knowledge and experience to ensure all leaders have equitable opportunities to achieve at their highest potential. I'd like to stand and welcome you to our district.
Thank you very much. And I just would like to say that I am ecstatic to be able to, first of all, proceed from the prior superintendents and the prior superintendents here at this district. Serving in an elementary district is a dream, and yeah, only we're to unify school districts. And being able to actually have a direct focus just on elementarys where most of my career has been spent is truly going to be a dream job. I look forward to interacting with all of the members of the community and hopefully meet your expectations. I hold an open door policy, and especially probably during the month of July as I'm here, please make yourselves available and introduce yourselves to me. And I will spend my first two months, once school starts, at school sites. So a lot of my time, I would say probably sixty to seventy percent of my time will be walking the hallways of our schools. I am extremely, extremely proud to be able to hold this position, and I look forward to the great work that will happen here at Salinas City Elementary School District. Thank you very much.
Martinez. Martinez. You have family here?
Oh, I do.
And you are from Salinas?
I was born in Salinas. I was raised in the military. My dad retired after twenty-four years of service for the Air Force, but prior to that, he served in the postcard, and he was also in, on the Army when the Army, when the Air Force didn't exist. And so my dad is under twenty-four hour care right now, so my mother is here in the back, Maria Valenzuela. Educators, my sister Yolanda Nehar, who has probably thirty, I don't know, thirty-plus years at San Jose Unified in Human Resources, and my sister Dorothy Valenzuela, who is a state preschool teacher, so. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna bring us back to action. Action items. Number one, if I may, number one, seeking approval of new superintendent contract. Well, I'd like to... Public comments on this thing? None? I don't see anybody. We do have a gentleman here. I don't remember his name, but...
Never seen him before.
Self-spoken, self-spoken sometimes kind of... Thank you.
I just wanna say, I'm really excited for our new superintendent. Sounds like she's got a wonderful, really great sounding resume and experience, so I'm really pleased, and thank you for your choice.
Thank you very much. Okay, there's... You were saying? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be very brief. It's Frank Garden, Mission Park. Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to welcome our new superintendent as well. This has been a long road. We've done a lot of advocating for the best person for the job this year. Teachers, I know, wanted an open search in December of 2013, and we finally got it this year. And through that process, we were able to advocate for transparency. We brought forth a consultant who identified the community's values of, we don't need to re-listen them, we know what they are, and we're hopeful that Ms. Martinez is that person. So thank you and welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Okay? Okay, we're...
Yes. As the senior member here, I think I would like to move that we approve the contract for our new superintendent, and I'd just like to say that I'm more than pleased to have her.
Okay? I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second on the table. Do we have discussion? Okay?
She fits the criteria that the community wanted very well.
Thank you very much. That takes a bunch of us getting together, trying to put our brains together and our opinions and concerns, and we came up with one. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say none?
Aye, zero.
Five, zero. Thank you. Congratulations. Next item, if I may. And this would be on the Local Control Accountability Plan, 2015, 16.
Mr. President, Bolom Castillo, his item was presented to you as an informational item last month, and now is coming for action, and the team developing the document with all the stakeholders are here. Mrs. Preacher? This is Chavez. This is...
Feel free to have a seat.
Good evening, board members. As Dr. Dulusa said last meeting, not last meeting, prior to that, we brought the draft LCAP to you for information. We will quickly go over and remind you, eight state priorities, they must all be included and addressed in our plan. They are all included and addressed in the plan. Five of them are addressed in Goal One, under academic achievement. Two of them are addressed under Goal Two, culture and climate, and one of them is addressed under Goal Three, parent and community involvement. While the other, while they are also interlaid and secondarily addressed under many of the goals, we are just marking the ones that are the primary priority for each goal on this year's template, based on recommendations and consultation we received from MCOE in a consultation call we had with them Friday, which is why you got this today, because they couldn't meet with us until Friday at three thirty. It was late Friday, so we've been quickly working on this. I apologize, it was Thursday, it was last week, late last week. And so again, we've done, oh, okay. Pretty much, we've done workshop in categorical department, pretty much of the parent involvement, community involvement process. We met with our parent advisory committee and Z-LAC four times throughout the school year we began in January 2015. And then we also, at the end of May twentieth, we met with both of the committees, and we took recommendations to, we gathered input to write it on the LCAP. And then also throughout the school year, years, starting in the fall, we met with management team, with principals, and also with district administrators to create, so we can learn the LCAP and to create, to strengthen our system, what we have currently going here at Salinas City. And we also had a district LCAP survey. We received one hundred and twenty surveys. And then at the end of Mary Preacher's then, we had a consultation with MCOE to finalize our, the draft for the LCAP for this school year. Okay, so Goal One, remember, is academic achievement by students. We did not change any of the metrics that we would be using. We will again monitor the number of misassignments we have with teachers. We have not had any in the past, so of course we want to maintain a zero rate of misassignments so that all students are taught by teachers with appropriate credentials. We did list in there that we hope that our English learners, sixty-one percent of the English learners advanced one level as demonstrated by themselves. That is not something we achieved this past, the past year. We were at forty-two percent, but I will say, so it's a long jump to sixty-one, but we've done it before, so we should be able to do it again. We at one point have sixty-two percent of our students meeting that goal, so I think some focused work can make us reach that level again. And that is a state target. It wasn't a random target, it's a state goal. And then also, we'll be establishing baseline targets for the S-PAC. We have not received our results, but we're hoping to improve the performance and percentage of students achieving proficiency by three percent from this current year, and/or the students that did not meet proficiency, we want to see scale score growth, positive scale score growth, which isn't listed up there, but in the LCAP it's listed. Again, these are some of the actions and actions and services that we've went over. Most of them are carrying forward from the previous year. What is different is adding the element of academic coaches to our professional development platform, and also providing the district-supported grade level release with the designated substitutes. Those positions are posted, so hopefully we'll get the sixteen substitutes that we have posted to make that, sixteen, to make that a reality. The other areas where we've added some things, this is just professional development, a lot of our professional development will focus around Eureka Math and the rolling out of that, but also tying in the elements and areas of focus of the language arts while we're doing that. So we're trying to integrate our professional development to be, to maximize the success, understanding that we have one common new material, the Eureka Math or Engage New York for the DI classes, same material as Spanish. So we're trying to really use that as a commonality and a stepping point for other areas of supporting teachers in the Common Core implementation. What I do, did I not put? Oh, that we just had the teachers, they just finished, actually, the GLAD trainer and trainers this past week, so that'll be, we had gladiators, we had support teachers in every site, but now we have teachers that have gone through the national certification for training and can provide a deeper level of support that we used to have to rely on Project GLAD to provide for us. So we'll still be working with Project GLAD as a transitional year, but hopefully over time, we'll be able to really provide that support locally and not have to contract out for it. Again, the other services that are proposed in the plan for this upcoming year is, we currently implemented four students per device, which are iPad tablets in the primary in K one, and then second through six of the Chromebooks. We have allocated funds to bring that ratio from three students to every device, and while we know, and we've talked about before, some sites have already gone below and are at, you know, will be at two to one in different things, this is the district supported in, and we want to make sure that as we're rolling out the technology, we have the infrastructure to support the use of the devices, but that is something that from both parents and teachers, we heard lowering the ratio would be definitely something that would make it more useful. We also are going to have for the first time some support, administrative support for, in a position that's been frozen for about ten years, we'll have a principal and special assignment to support curriculum and instruction. We also are proposing a program manager to support English learners and alternative programs, and that is as we see our dual immersion programs and our Spanish language arts program grow, and then also, given that I will be at Veranda and we need a little bit of support still to provide that compliance with English learners, we look at that as maybe something that might take root and phase out over time as we get there, but we do have our federal program monitoring review next year, so we want to make sure that we have the support needed in that area. And then again, we will have full-time vice principals at all sites, and we will, we have increased the funding for each of the school sites by four hundred thousand dollars total. So it's two million dollars that will be distributed among the school sites. The other part, one of the barriers, which is something, after we consulted with MCOE, where they really wanted to see the little tweaks and changes in our original plan, was in the annual update section, where we had been very verbose in our projected services and actions in our fourteen, fifteen plan. We had, when we put what we had then, we were much more to the point, teachers were hired, but they wanted to look, okay, tell us the ten teachers that you put over here were hired. So they were more just expanding the information that was there. And so one other thing in terms of, and also explaining barriers, implementation, one other thing that we had, we had increased the site, the district-funded instructional aid time at sites. And what we found sometimes is it was difficult to fill these one-hour positions here and there, and the same with the, I'm joking a little, Goal Two, but it was a common theme, the same with the HASA positions, where we had two hours. So, and that was with the public, and I was talking about, well, we want this, but we don't have the staff to make it become a reality, so we realized that we need to make sure that we're making the positions attractive enough so that we can hire staff that can be here and become trained, highly trained, not, our staff is wonderfully dedicated, but we have staff members going to three or four sites in one day, just to make a complete day's work, and that is very taxing on them as well as the school site too. Our staff want, all of our class sites want to be vested at the school they serve, and it's difficult when you're split between four sites. So that is something by moving the instructional aids to taking some of the hours, increasing the allocation of the site, and then making each site having one full-time, six-hour position, something we hope will help fill that. Then the other thing, the System Forty-four, you heard about that earlier, it was, in our current year, we had it for a fifty to, oh, actually forty-five minutes, I think it was forty-five to fifty-minute part of the third grade language arts instruction. It was not the complete language arts instructional program. We found value in that, and this current year, we had students that were more than one grade level below, more than one year below grade level, in language arts, participating in Gateways Intervention, and at some site, Read One Eighty, if the site had chosen to fund that, right? But what we will be having next year and realizing that the students need access to the Common Core state standards, so our fourth grade students who are still struggling with reading will not have an entire two-hour language arts replacement block, but they will participate in System Forty-four again with a portion of their fifty to sixty minutes of their time, and the upper grades would go away from the two-hour block to a forty-five to fifty, which is a fifty to sixty, fifty to sixty minute program in something called Rewards for fifth and sixth graders. And that was something that was piloted at Laurelwood this current year and seemed to yield successful results. So a lot of our, I'm gonna pass it to Goal Two in a minute, we're still in the baseline data collection phase, because we have new, we don't have data for this past year that can compare to the previous years, nor is it necessarily data that we got from this year that will compare forward as we get the S-PAC. So we're kind of in a transitional moment here in terms of data, so you will see, Mrs. Chides will present some data that we have been able to look at over the past previous year and this current year in terms of attendance and suspension, because there's more consistency than in the assessments that the students have taken in their academic areas.
Okay. Good evening, this is Chides, Director of Human Personnel, and our department addresses the measurable outcomes, the goals, as they relate to school family culture, and in response to the information that MCOE gave us related to what they would like to see as far as revisions, just like Mary mentioned, they wanted baseline data. So these next two slides were actually, should have been on the end because there was a repeat from the last presentation, but since they're up there, I'm just gonna review them. So if you recall, last time we spoke, if we want to create a positive school, culture and climate, a safe learning environment for students, we do it in the areas of attendance, you know, for kids, feel safe, they're so intense, cool. And I'm sorry, again, this is in another slide. Behavior would change, there'd be a decrease in suspensions, and then we talked about pro-social behavior, so the kids would be learning behaviors that indicate pro-social behavior. So this is a repeat from last time, and the way we did, some of the actions that we proposed in the LCAP were expanding anti-bullying program, OBEA, expanding dayworks, and we did that, like Mary mentioned, about the three-hour HASA, having that as an opportunity to really staff the school sites with adults that could supervise them. And then these are two other areas that we would address to improve attendance, so the establishment of a board, a starboard, which is gonna be a board from different agencies within the district and with that, and outside community, social services, et cetera, meeting quarterly periodically to address trudancy cases. And then finally, for the school sites that would like to have Saturday schools, there's a recovery attendance program that can help the kids make up their, these are ICU, but at the same time, the learning intervention. So these, again, these are from the previous presentation, but what I want to share in the next five slides are some of the baseline data that we're gonna share. In the beginning is, one of the goals we have is we want to have a nice seven percent attendance rate maintained, and here are the previous two years, so we have each elementary school site, thirty, forty, forty-fifty, and then the difference is whether they, there was a slip or there was an improvement. So we know that we need to do some work to reach a nice level. So that's the baseline data, we'll be using that to address our goal. So this is in the area of suspensions, we want to decrease, so this is our baseline number. We have seven hundred and seven for this previous school year, so we need to increase the total by ten percent. So that's the whole school cycle. I'm sorry for the font, really tiny. One of the other areas, as far as providing professional development in the area... One of the other areas, as far as providing professional development, in the area of Resort Justice, so this past year, we had various cohorts, and they each had three-day training, so we had classified training in Resort Justice, we had cohort 7A, a three-day training, cohort 7B, another three-day training, 7C, three days, so that gave us a total of, from the past two years, district-wide, we had 171 staff members training, 40 classified center offices, and breaking down to three days, it's 131. So, again, baseline information, we can use that to build something. In terms of PBIS, we had various school sites attend three-days training as well, and coaching, PBS coaching training as well, bringing 45, 50, 60, or the 40, 50, so again, baseline information. And counseling services, so Harmony at Home, Sticks and Stones Services, these are the previous years, we've had the number of hours served, students, and as you can see, from one year to the next, the number of hours doubled, I gotta check this, because this is the activity, it should be, we had checked in the wrong information, yeah, we had more hours, more hours serving last week, so I'll have to go back and check that. But, so yes, so this is Harmony at Home, again, baseline information. So, I'll make sure that the actual ALCAP reflects the right numbers. Any questions, is my report in my area? Or will they go to the end of, go ahead.
I just have one question about the suspensions and expulsions, it's quite different from school to school, is someone analyzing why, I know somebody just size a lot of different issues, but are we taking a look at that to see the?
There's a whole factor, one, we gotta make sure that it's included correctly, because we have multiple data systems, that information is included, we have Power School, we have Swiss, which is another data bank, so sometimes the numbers don't work out, then that goes to CalPads, so, and then you just have different practices, so yes, part of our job over the summer and beginning of the school year, you know, seeing the differences, having conversations with the administrators, seeing if the data is reliable, so this is the end of the school year, this was what was reported, and I know already that there's some numbers that weren't included, because after this was revised, I've got some additional information from what I've been doing, so this is the undocumented, it'll be revised.
Who has Resort of Justice, who has Sticks and Stones, who has many factors?
Your administrators, yeah, a whole, a lot of factors, but yes, so we would take that into consideration through our certification gathering, how much of it is accurate information, one, and two, sort of justice practices, three, you know, the different blocks, they have, and I can't.
Maybe it's important you come back to us and let us clarify what we're doing to make it.
Correct, to decrease, yes. Yes, we're moving to everybody getting trained in this use of Swiss data, which is a data system that works with our PBIS, we're innovations, support system, and what it is, it's very detailed, we need information, so you can see, T-Trans, which sounds like to say how many, what are the number of students that are being sent to the office for being disruptive, okay, and then you could even drill down to the first day, to what grade level, what time, and so we had, this past year, in the first year, a lot of the PBIS trainees here went to schools, so they're gonna have an opportunity to really take that information that they're this past year, they used it and implemented to some extent, but having had that, you know, with the training, now they're gonna be, have, you know, data conversations related to office referrals, discipline information, but, just reminding me that, you know, Swiss is the data platform there where you need to analyze incidents and behavior on campus.
Okay, so, this were the expected measurable outcomes, for parent and community involvement, pretty much, we would like the schools to have an ENSA assessment at the beginning of the school year, and also to check in at the midpoint of the school year, this will give us like a really good sense of where we're at in conducting, having parent involvement activities at our sites, and then also, another outcome is that parents would like to receive timely and regular information on district and school events, that we're having for them, the parent involvement to promote more activities at the school site, and then also, one of the major issues here is the immediate enrollment and visibility for families that are homeless and foster youth, we really need to pay attention to these children at each site, and this is important. So, this are the proposed actions and services for the parent and community involvement, we're gonna increase, we'd like to increase the time for office staff, the time to skirt on each site, between two to three hours, and this is to continue communication for parents and also to assist in entering all the data that Liz was talking about and Swiss. Also, we would like to expand communication, using a variety of resources to communicate with parents, like they continue using the marquee, the website, the monthly newsletters, we continue this at the school site, text messages, whatever it takes to promote awareness of what's going on at the school site for parents, and parents would like to see a variety and also frequent trainings of, and for educational workshops, different topics from educational workshops to health workshops, anything that would interest the parents to have their kids be more successful at school. And then also, we'd like to propose that we hire somebody at the Family Resource Center, like a budget clerk to help for the, to help currently the person at the Family Resource Center to input more student data or services to students. And the budget for ALCAP, I'm gonna have to marry, just for you to talk on this. I just wanna, this side and the following side were provided by the business department, by Lona Christiansen, and I just want to, it summarizes the services and actions for all three goals in terms of the concentration on supplemental dollars that will be used to support them. Our district does receive 1.4 million, we'll be receiving next year, in supplemental concentration due to the 85% of our students qualifying as, in the unduplicated count, so you can see the large majority, there is the 2 million on the bottom that will be allocated to school sites, they are to provide services to support their students in most need, but aligned to the three goals that we have just discussed here, and the majority, as you see, 72% will go towards salaries and benefits, and that is sometimes for permanent employees in terms of when we're talking about adding teachers for class size, for grade span adjustment, as well as the vice principals, but it also accounts for money's used to pay people to attend professional development outside their regular workday or work year, it also includes the cost of salaries to provide the summer school program and any other type of centralized after-school intervention that may happen through these funds, and then there is, I'm sorry, I can't see without my glasses, and I don't have, so there is 11% allocated for materials, supplies and equipment, and that includes the technology we talked about, lowering the ratio of the devices from four to one, four students to one device to three devices, as well as some materials to the SNAP reading, the other list you saw under goal one, the cost for those comes out of that area, there is a small amount allocated, under 1% for parents and staff development, to attend training outside of the district, if they were attending a conference or a training that is not provided by a district, by a district employee or someone that we contracted to come here to provide it, so even paying registration for something, and MCOE would count as that. Then there is funds for contracts and services, that again is for anything that we have to pay another third party to provide to us, so some of the trainings that we've talked about, some of the counseling services that were earlier on the consent agenda item, those services are paid to an outside, a third party, another agency to provide those resources. Then we have software licenses, that counts for 5.3%, and that is for some of the things that would help with the interventions, but they're licensed, so we're paying the third party to provide access to those software programs. And then last, we have transportation, which includes money to support parents attending district trainings or trainings outside of the district times, and also for our summer school, and then the other time, we need to provide transportation that is centralized, there are a couple of field trips included there, the cost for sixth grade, each school to send their sixth grade students to science camp is in there, and then I believe also the trip, the promiseday at CSUNB is included in that cost, and up above, I forgot to say, under 5,000, contract for services, the fourth grade swimming, is we do pay the pool to provide that service for our fourth grade students, and then use the bus to take them home. So, the next slide was just the allocation, again, per site, that shows you all of the schools are receiving money from the $2 million, it is the same per pupil amount based on the number of students they have that qualify as quote-unquote unduplicated count students, either English learners, free and reduced lunch, qualify or foster youth, and I believe some of, a few of the, I know one slide back, I just wanted to, she just wanted to show me that some of the data we're still getting in terms of the, yeah, I'll go back to the slide, she was.
I remember.
Yes, that one.
So, yeah, so the typical file should not even be there, in talking to Harmony at Home, they're still gathering data, the counselors are submitting their files, so June 30th, they'll have a number of how many students were shown, so I don't know where it's, but it should have been left.
And I just want to reiterate that, to know that we had to, this plan was being created sometimes with just six months of data, we haven't, I mean, it's, the school year started and this plan started to be developed in what was going along the whole process, but sometimes we didn't have the information because nothing hadn't been able to happen long enough to assess whether they were good or not, so it is a three-year plan, so some of the initiatives that we put forth that we did this year, we did see some positive results and felt the idea to expand, and others, we saw different results, so we've really tried to stay focused and provide, stay in line with the board goals of making sure that we're providing support to our primary students, so that we don't have so many students in the upper grades still needing additional support if they've been enrolled in our school since kindergarten, so that is an area where we definitely do keep a lot of focus and continue to strengthen that area of support.
Let me ask you, board members, do you have any questions?
I have one quick question, first, can you put it back to the slide of the last one with the school allocation? Yeah, and then you talked about eliminating the Gateway Program, which was two-hour block, and then doing the expanding of the Arts and Sports Program instead for upper grades, did you talk to the teachers, Mary, how did you make that decision?
I personally.
I mean, was there some input by the teachers, what was working, what wasn't, and why we ended up switching, because that's a pretty drastic change, from two hours to one hour.
I'm gonna look at that, it was at the picture, I know it was there.
It was, there's a couple of issues, part of it was, one of the demands, requirements of the aid priorities is to ensure that every student has access to public, and although the Gateway's program is a common core one, it isn't a Common Core program, we did take it, we didn't see any data that the students were making gains, and then we did take, we did see at Laurelwood, that students who were doing the reward program did make gains, and then we had teachers from Laurelwood come to the program improvement, the recording team, and present the model that they're using, what they're doing with Rewards, but we did not survey, do a survey of teachers.
But you did look at the data to see what was worth being used.
And the, I'll be very honest with you, the two-hour replacement language arts programs that we have done in this district probably for five years, Dr. Luther, was, yeah, when we had program improvement, that was initially a mandate, that you had to do a language arts in the upper grades, four, five, six, a core replacement intervention program.
What was it?
Yes, and throughout that time, our students who were in the two, two-and-a-half-hour day interventions, few, very few missed us, and so we were looking for a program that would excel.
I'm a Laurelwood teacher, sixth grade, and we found Rewards allowed us to get, to pinpoint interventions for those students, but then it also gave them time to be in the core program, so all your students are in the core program, and then what we did is we leveled all our students, so we had our Rewards intervention, and then the rest of the students we leveled, and we gave that, that ended up being literature time, because even though Common Core really pushes nonfiction, we still wanted to keep the literature, so in a lot of ways, all those kids grew and had, we were able to really hit what their needs were, so we really liked it, we found we could really do a lot of differentiation.
It is also, as an intervention program, has a really solid base of research blanket in terms of being effective, it was developed by Andrew Archer, who many people here know as a very solid educator.
I don't get any questions from the board or anything like that, so anyone from the public? You've commentated, but, sure, very darn mission, our school partner, too, I have to try and be smart, I guess, to see how I incorporate these comments in terms of the ALCAP, because I really, really wanted to respond to the crossing guard comment earlier, but I don't really want to wait until in August to do it, so the questions I have in terms of the surveys that were put out for the ALCAP, no data from the surveys was revealed except for what was in the presentation, but was there any mention, like, parents and stakeholders about crossing guards being a priority? There was, I've heard it was a $200,000 increase per site for ALCAP funding, is that unrestricted in the sense that it can be used for crossing guards, and it's a three-year plan, can it be amended to include crossing guard funding if that's determined to be a priority? You know, I do appreciate you, Ms. Barnes, setting the record straight, I do recall now that that was a city cut at the time, I guess you would know, you were on the city council at that time, I want to say it was 2006, where privately funded, funded crossing guard was accidentally killed at Mission Park, I remember, I was a 911 dispatcher at the time, so I remember that incident very well in 2006, so it's more about nine years, that was privately funded thing, so we have to assume that the funding disappeared around a decade ago, that doesn't mean we should be relying on the city of Salinas to fund this program, I know Measure G recently passed, my friend Wes has been attending a lot of the Oversight Committee meetings, I don't know that school crossing guards are on their radar, if you have connections, political connections to the mayor, certainly I would want to expedite that if the city's willing to spend some Measure G funds on our district, if not, you know, this is all about local control, why can't we take that program back if it's identified as a priority? I did some quick math, I was sitting here after you made those comments, Ms. Barnes, if we were to pay, I don't know, you know, a livable wage, $15 an hour, to an instructional aide or a yard duty supervisor, somebody who can take on this responsibility, it might be outside the scope of their job description, but, you know, I'm a union rep, job descriptions can be amended, as long as you go to the union with, say, hey, we have a need, we want to fund crossing guards, is this something you'd be willing to do for a half hour in the morning and a half hour after school? So, to fund a crossing guard at $15 an hour at all 13 schools would cost $195 a day, and if we have 180 days in the school year, we multiply that by $195, that's $35,000. We just spent $23,000 in unrestricted funds to increase the number of days for our superintendent. In high school economics, they teach you about opportunity cost versus opportunity benefit, I think the opportunity benefit of a crossing guard is so much more than 30 additional days of the top administrator, so that's something I'd like to, this is more to explore at some point. Did you finish with your program?
Yeah.
Already for action already?
Yeah, we're ready for action already.
We have a commentator up here. Yes, your name, please.
Sean Henry. Again, with the local control accountability plan, all those financials are connected to the school accountability report cards, so I'm very glad that Michelle has got those in. And again, as I said before, in terms of a lot of people in the district, she's very, very responsive, and so it was good she got that in there today, because over the last five years, we haven't known what the financials were at the school. A couple of months ago, I was actually attributed to finding the error for the school accountability report cards, which isn't, okay, so be it. But the point with the local funds here is that, that question about the allocation of funds, the local funds, how they're being spent at the school. I had very pointed questions in emails, and in this meeting dating back to September. And actually, it shouldn't have been me who actually found that error, because I don't have access to all the information you all do. I asked specifically, how come there was such a big discrepancy between the spending based off of what was being reported on the last school accountability report card, between Roosevelt and Sherwood, two schools with high needs? And there was dramatic differences in reporting, thousands of dollars, difference. Never got an answer from anybody on the school board. If anyone actually took it seriously, I think y'all would have gotten credit for finding it. And we wouldn't have actually presented, actually sent out erroneous SART reports again for the fifth year in a row, and it would have prevented a lot of support for some other people. So I think it's important to take the community's input, especially when we're talking about local control accountability funds. Important. And in terms of accuracy, what was even said here in the presentations, I have no problem when I make an error. And I might have made an error when I presented some information, but I did point out to Mr. Rabelato, the reporter for The Californian, that what I was basing some of the information on was his own article about the retirement of Dr. Luz on February 9th. And it said, "Before taking the helm, Luz has served more than 27 years in Salinas District as a classroom teacher, program manager, associate superintendent, and educational services."
Stick to the presentation, there was none. Okay, any questions?
Okay, so I, Ms. Barnes was very excited to have that presentation, but this is also important for the public to know about, that somebody is wrong here. And we'll find out who is.
Thank you very much. I'll be close, because we gotta go to action.
Yes, and I just want to remind you, the last slide, for sure, the allocation of school sites was only from the supplemental concentration fund. Schools that received Title I funds and any other funds were not presented in this presentation.
Something over here. Ms. Barnes?
I'd like to move approval over to the LCAP and thank all the presenters for all the hard work that you've gone on, the hours and hours and hours and hours and lots of overtime. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'm hoping for a second. So second. Mr. Kim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
How many names? Say none. Five, zero, yeah. Okay, the next item is the Resolution 2014, 15 dash 41 and 42, retiree appreciation. Dr. Luz?
At this time, I would like the administration to substitute the vote to approve the standard resolution for our employees who are retiring. Do we have in the audience, Mr. Reiger? Plaguing? No? Paula Abbott. Of course, of the two employees that the, I would like the board to approve the resolution for their services, outstanding employees. Please, excuse me, hold.
Motion to approve Resolution 2014, 15 dash 41 and 42, retiree appreciation.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. You have a second? Second, Foster? Yes?
This is roll call.
This is roll call.
Mr. Duff here?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Kim? Mr. Larisa?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Any questions? Or...
Maybe the restroom.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, make it four. Four, one absentee. So we know he's here, so. The next item is curriculum, which is none, and then personality, which is...
Thank you, Dr. Luz. All right, according to you tonight, a revised job description for truck driver. And this job description, basically same duties and responsibilities. The physical requirements of the job have been added to the job description.
Do you have any comments for the public on this job description? There's none. And board members, do you have any questions? Okay, I'm hoping for a motion on the item called revised truck driver job description. Motion to approve item C1, revised truck driver job description. Echo. Okay, do you want to get a second? Mr. Larisa, Mr. Foster, second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Say none. Five, zero. Now, we're going to section D, which is business, and 2015, 16. Mr. Strachan?
Really, again, this is President, trustees, Dr. Luz, my peers and members of the audience. I stand before you with several items tonight. The first one is the approval of our budget for 2015, 2016. And I am, I'm not gonna, A, bore you with the regurgitation of what we did at the last meeting for information. Nothing has changed from that information. You do have a comprehensive board packet, and I look forward at the, at the board study session of going over it in much greater detail to ensure your full understanding. Separately, I would invite anyone, anytime, to come down to the business department, and we're happy to go over portions of all the budget with you. It's almost like a different language if you live it every day. Lona is totally immersed in it, and she lives it every day and every night, and God bless her for all the hard work she put in to bring this thing together. So with that, I would, I would just highlight a couple of areas. First of all, I've got to tell you that funds follow function. So as the LCAP was developed, all the funds were tied to those tasks in the LCAP, and you saw that in previous slides that Lona had developed in both head services and business presenters two weeks ago. So the budget's unchanged from what you saw. However, lo and behold, after that budget was presented, the legislature saw fit to change the gap funding percent. And so it was 53.08, it's down to 51.52. That means we're in at about $345,000 less. And budgets are living items. You know, some people will complain, God, I don't know today, or it changed from what I heard last week. You know, I'm not comfortable with what dollars we have or don't have. Well, budgets are living things. We don't know until the end of the year what we're gonna get from the state in many cases. When they change something on the 15th of June, hallelujah. You know, we're not getting more. Last year, we got a little bit more. And as we execute the budget, we'll find that we under-execute in certain areas and we over-execute in other areas, and we have to balance that all out, the changes to the budget. Now, because of the change in the gap funding and guidance from the legislature, we will need to do a 45-day revise. That's required by state statute, and we will do that revise. However, it was not gonna be within 45 days. We'll bring it to the board on 10 August for approval and deliver it to MCOE on 11 August. And that will reflect any additional income, any reduction in income, any tweaks to any programs in the LCAP or in the base level of the budget. I'd like to talk just about a couple of issues. First of all, the unduplicated count is truly critical because of the amount of funding we get. Remember, we get 20% supplemental, and then we get 50% for concentration of every child over 55%. And small differences in...